Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. I'd like to invite Pastor Deborah Tenens from Asbury Church forward to give the invocation.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we are so thankful that we are gathered here today. Thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Bless this meeting, bless the agenda, bless, oh God, the council members and the members of this great city of Madison. Bless us all, oh Lord. Individually and collectively, we pray. Amen.
Mayor Finley, Councilmember Robleski, here. Councilmember Spears, Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw. Council President Bartlet, here. Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seaford.
Here.
And are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
It's my understanding that we do not have any amendments.
Congratulations. And the agenda is approved? Next, we will go to the approval of minutes, A number two thousand and twenty-three dash ten dash W S dated September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
They've approved. Second.
Motion and a second any discussion. Ready for vote.
Aye.
For Seaford.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
I'm also voting aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Council President Bartlet. And the motion passes. Next minute's number two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen dash R G dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
No change. Second.
Okay, motion is taken in any discussion. Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
And the motion passes. We do not have any presentations and awards this evening, so we will move to public comments. Public comments for each person last three minutes. Please state your name and your district. We do have one item for public hearing later, so I'd ask that you reserve your comments on that public hearing till that point in the meeting. We're going to begin with those who've turned in their names for comments, and I'm going to begin with Ron Johnson.
Well, thank you. My name is Ron Johnson. I live one sixteen St. Eden Street, Madison, Alabama. I'd like to speak in opposition to the ordinance that's coming up for first reading. It's number two thousand and twenty-three dash one sixty-four, amending the ground regulations for cleaning, restoration, headstone in the the city of Madison Municipal Cemeteries. In December of two thousand and twenty-two, the cemetery committee contacted me and told me I had to stop doing the headstone repairs that I was doing on the cemetery, South Mill Road. They told me that I needed to get permission from the Alabama Historic Commission, AHC. They gave me a copy of this multi-page form that they said I need to fill out and get permission. Now, this is dated nineteen seventy-five. This is their current application.
Mr. Johnson, could you speak into the mic? I'm having a little difficulty hearing you. Thank you.
Sorry. I see. Okay, so I got this, I got this packet of to be filled out, thirty-two pages, thirty-two lines long. And I mentioned this to my SIRC friends, and John Rankin gave me a copy of the state law saying that the nineteen, I'm sorry, the two thousand seven dash four oh eight is the Alabama Law Act that we use to do the cemetery and it gives us city authority to manage these cemeteries. I went to Attorney Matthew Bolch, and he said that was the current state law. So I thought, where was the conflict? So I called Leanne Waller Trump, the Cemetery Program coordinator. Her name is at the bottom of this form, so I gave her a call. I said, do we have to go to the AHC to get permission to fill out the forms? And she said, no, the state law gives the city the authority to manage and regulate the cemeteries on their own. We don't have to go back to them. So, but she did recommend that the city does manage these cemeteries, so people just don't go in. She said, willing and willing, that's her words. And I says, okay, so I wonder why would the city of Madison want to give up the authority to the state that the state has already granted us? Passes of that ordinance, I read the ordinance, it would shut down people like John Rankin and myself, who have been doing a lot of work in the cemetery as far as headstone repairs. So I think it's a bad idea. Since two thousand and four, I've been doing headstone, I've been leading up the effort with the Madison Historic Society that's been funding and providing people to help restore these headstones. And I've done about, when I say I've led about eighteen of them, I keep saying I did, the Historic Society did it. We've straightened a dozen or so obelisks, and we've done.
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, but you're out of time. I know it goes really fast, but thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
The next person who's turned their name in is Jenny Paris.
Thank y'all. I'm City Council President and the rest of the City Council. My name is Jenny Paris, and I live on Lansdowne Drive in the Heritage Plantations subdivision. I'm in District Two. Our family has been residents of Madison City for almost twenty-five years. Our children, both of our children, attended Madison City Schools, starting kindergarten at Heritage Elementary and graduating from James Clemens High School. After completing high school, our son Ryan went to earn a degree in criminal justice. His goal after graduating college was to come back and serve the community where he grew up. His reason? To give back to the community that had given him so much. He proudly serves the residents of Madison City as a police officer, as the SRO at James Clemens High School, and a member of the SWAT team. I come tonight to express my concerns as a reded resident and a mother. I know the job you have is a difficult one, especially for the needs of the growing city. I also believe that it's of vital importance to provide for those that serve and protect our community. I ask for your help in seeking ways that the members of the Madison SWAT team have an armored vehicle that provides protection when arriving on scene instead of the back of an F-250. All first responders have difficult jobs protecting us. Let us do all that we can to provide what they need to keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paris. The next person who's turned in a card is Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening, Teddy. You need to have your mic down, too, because when you commented to him, we couldn't hear you either. So the mics are a very important thing to use. Running out of time because we're only limited to three minutes, so there you go. I am going to pick up from some of the comments I was going to make at the last council meeting. Okay, because I ran out of time. Okay, I'm concerned about budgeting more involvement of City Council during the year and also to provide for better budgeting and also better and more productive communication between mayor and city council, and those two items all need to be timely. Okay, so an example is the Hexagon Building that I talked about at the last meeting and how, oops, it's not going to be available or able to be used for a fire station. Okay, so it's also been revealed in recent meetings that, you know, the mayor even commented that he had inflated budget requests in several areas, and some budgets were padded. Do not, I do not expect this out of seasoned mayor and seasoned city council members. Many of you have been on the council for, what, seven, seven and a half years, whatever. Seems clear to me that this last year's initial budget was way off by the mid-year budget review. Oversight should have been kind of ongoing, and the mid-year review kind of was kind of really kind of haphazard, kind of passed through, get through the rest of the year without running out of money. And there was really wide gaps on the numbers and even the numbers that I was able to see as a member of the public. Okay, city, city council and mayor should have more communication, and mayor needs to check on decisions that should have council input as well as opportunities for public input. Recent items have clearly had the mayor out of step on decisions made and then retracted. Number of citizens at the last council meeting was a result of limited thought and decision-making by Mayor Finley and not in talking, you know, the Christmas parade routing with the rest of you. Okay. So, and city council personnel should be able to be provided and have more insight and oversight in the various areas, which you all are on that thing, and I'm going to be running out of million, meeting minutes. But the rest of my comments are just going to have to wait for another city council meeting. But I'm just very disappointed that we are only limited to the three minutes, and many times we have to speak before information is provided, whereas there's not information provided before the meeting on the attachments or whatever that come to being voted on. So it's, I just feel like we're out of step. Thank you.
The next comment card is from John Rankin.
Okay, I'm John Rankin. I live at one oh three Madison Avenue in the heart of Madison. Been there for about thirty-six years. But when I was about thirty years ago, I got a permanent medical disability, and that gave me time to pursue my lifetime passion of learning history. And I love learning the history of this town. So dug in, I found a lot of things. And I've really enjoyed my years of being medically disabled. But anyhow, I puzzled a little bit about what's the problem that's affecting Ron Johnson is where'd it come from? I don't see a problem. It's worked that way before I got here with Percy Keel. He took care of the cemetery. Ron's doing a superb job, better than anybody I've ever seen. And I got appointed by Dale Strong to head up as a charter member of the Madison County Cemetery Rehab Committee. And I tried to tell them when they started drifting into the AHC control, don't do it. It's nothing but problems. I've worked with people in cemeteries for a long time, over three hundred in Madison County that I've done. I photograph all the tombstones, and I've got all those photographs online, or they're going online, so everybody can see them. But anyhow, I said, I don't know the problem. I hope you do. I don't think there's one to be solved, even alone. It's been working better than normal, and it saves the city a lot of money. Ron works for free for the city, and the Historical Society pays for all the materials. I do know that everywhere I've ever been that anything like AHC gets in control, they try to exert more control than they should, because there's nothing but problems. The state overturned that because they had so many complaints. So the two thousand seven cemetery law that was passed and signed, I think it was either Hunt or Riley, I forget. At my age, I have to forget everything, I think. But anyhow, that law guarantees right of access for any cemetery in the state to anybody, whether a citizen of the state or not, for the purposes of visiting an ancestor's grave or a family member's grave, or for maintenance, or for historical research. So I've had free access to all cemeteries, and I think Ron would, too, and likewise for maintenance. The state guarantees it. That's basically all I have to say, that I think you need to think carefully about what you're doing. The city incurs more cost if you get rid of Ron, and he's done more than I have, and he's much better at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. I have a comment card from Jocelyn Brewer, but it seems like all the comments have to do with redistricting. Is that correct, Ms. Brewer? Do you want to reserve your comments for that? Okay, is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to speak to the council? Please state your name and your district.
Margie Daly, Carrington District. I'd like to once again mention the new LED lights that are insufficient in lighting the older neighborhoods because the poles are too far apart, the arms are too short, and the radius of the light does not work. It's causing more motor vehicle accidents and problems in our neighborhood. You can't see at night. It's just going to cause more, you know, fatalities in the end. The second thing is I see Finance Committee report on here. I attended the Finance Committee. It did not happen. So how can we have a report if the public was not invited to sit in on the Finance Committee? There was not a quorum. So three, twenty twenty-three, three twenty-nine, there was no committee meeting. So I don't know how you can put that on the agenda. Now, I've done freedom of information requests. One was for redevelopment areas. The response was Madison City has zero redevelopment areas. Now, we all know that's not true, so I don't know why it's such a problem. There's no transparency anymore in this city. Freedom of information requests are legal, and to say there's no redevelopment is unbelievable. Because I know downtown Town Madison, and I think that Avenue and maybe the Shanty Shacks. Okay, so let's talk about the Shanty Shacks. They have a big now leasing sign, but yet they want to trust people off the property. It's either open or it's not. I understand they may be running out of money because they had concrete liens in the probate court. You can look it up online, and they just paid them last week. So I don't know. Maybe they're running out of money. Fire safety. Everything on the Hexagon Building, I went over it. I now know it's only half a building that we purchased for the six million in November. Everything says it's for a fire station and police station for safety for the citizens. You pass that on all the paperwork. We were told by Chief Bailey the response time was fine for the Hexagon Building. Now, all of a sudden, it doesn't meet response time, so now it's going to be used for pickleball and softball for the few. Even if a thousand people in the city use it, that's only two percent of the population. So, you know, you told us it was fire and safety. We passed ordinances. We passed reports. They all say fire and police stations. We're not getting that. It's just very disappointing with this council, especially about those LED lights. It has to be corrected. You can't make our neighborhoods unsafe just because we're older neighborhoods. I mean, as it is, we have roads that haven't been paved in thirty years, thirty years. And yet, you know, we're doing all kinds of stuff in Town Madison, all kinds of stuff over here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Diddy Evercash, a proud member of District Five, and I just wanted to thank you all. I am far from a subject matter expert on cemeteries, but these two gentlemen are. And I'll tell you, they've put their heart and soul into this. The Historic Society just wanted you all to know that there is an option on the table other than turning the repair and upkeep of our historic cemetery over to Montgomery. There is another option. We would love to come to you all with paperwork that we have come up with that can help find the proper department for you all to let us report to. We want to report to somebody. We're happy to. We're happy to report to somebody. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to point you to Ron and John because again, I am not that person, but I'm very proud of the work that these two gentlemen have led in that historic cemetery. That being said, whatever decision you all make, we will honor and we will respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Evercash. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the Consent and Join-in Finance Committee report.
Finance Committee, uh, reviewed all the periodic bills to be paid and find everything to be in order.
We can't hear you. You gotta talk into the mic.
Yes, ma'am. With that, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any quiet in the chambers or you're going to be excused? We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Some of us just aren't as loud as others.
Just wanted to maybe mention the donation from MVP.
Uh, yes, do you wanna cover that or do you want me to?
It's a big one.
So, um, MVP has donated, uh, fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars on behalf of the Rotary Club, uh, for the Home Place Park Pro- Project and from what I understand, that's been a gr- uh, joint effort, um, with, with different, uh, with MVP kinda leading the charge on, uh, on collecting money for, for the Home Place Park and I think Rotary was gonna give fifty thousand tot- total.
Mm-hmm.
So this one, was one of their first installments.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd just like to thank, thank them for that.
Okay, thank you. Were there meetings held, just to answer the questions, the Finance Committee?
There were. I was out of town two, two, two weeks ago.
We review, we review.
Review these ahead of time. We called the party.
Not a meeting, it's a review.
Okay, I just didn't know, is it, do you usually have a meeting? Is it usually discussed?
It's the same thing we've done, I don't know, for as long as we've been a city. The Finance Committee reviews these and that's what he said, that we reviewed them and I seconded that we reviewed them.
That's right.
Roger sends those out, we review them. It's basically paying the bills is what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, we can stop paying the bills and we don't get anything.
And I think Mrs. Spears was out of town because she was attending that Tarkog Conference, the state conference, so she was not able to attend. Um, okay, are we ready for a vote?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Presentations and reports beginning with District One.
Yes, well, I'll start with what probably the mayor would say and just wanna thank everyone for Saturday and really the preparation even before Saturday. We know it's a long year for the Madison Street Festival. We're so grateful for all the hours and time and effort our wonderful volunteers that are on the committee put into, um, really the best event in Madison annually. Wanna definitely give a shout out to HMC, who was present in case we needed them, Madison Fire and Rescue, MPD, and really the unsung heroes, I think, of our city public works. I mean, they were there at O-DART thirty, putting up barriers and barrels and just making for a wonderful, safe event. We don't have the final numbers in yet, but it was a beautiful day, great way to kick off fall and just wanna thank everyone that helped to make this happen. There're not a lot of communities anymore that can put it together, an event of this size and essentially shut down downtown and didn't downtown just show out. I mean, it just, it was just a great day and, and definitely the highlight for me, um, personally every year of going and just seeing old friends. So I, I know the other council members will probably address that as well. Um, the only other announcement I have is tomorrow night at six-thirty, the Friends of the Library will be meeting. If you'd like to get involved, if you have a passion for the library, uh, we do a lot for their children's program. Uh, we're always looking for volunteers and would love to see you there. The meeting is at the library in the program room and that's all I have.
Thank you, District Three.
Um, I, I too would like to thank everybody that was involved, the volunteers, um, and Denzine, I'd like to thank you for your work on that, that committee, um, and Ms. Evercash. I mean, you know, there's a lot of people in this room and there's a lot of people make that happen, um, and honestly, it, it worked really well. The only thing I had to do is go, go stand down in the city tent and kinda pass out things and give them numbers where they could call people, so I appreciate that, um, and I appreciate the, the fact that you guys are holding it downtown because that allows us to get, you know, people downtown and get to see our beautiful downtown. We've spent a lot of money down there and I hope we can continue to do that. Um, public works, police, fire, I mean, everybody's involved and I, again, thank you. Um, the other thing I'd like to address real quick and I'll address it a little bit later on, but, um, I do wanna talk about the, the cemetery and the headstones. Um, I do live in the downtown district. I know how hard it is to get things done and, uh, and, you know, restored and that kinda thing. And as our homes get older, as our cemeteries get older, as things get older, people tend to forget about them. And anytime you have a group of volunteers that do something, you know, the harder we make it to do that, um, they don't wanna do that. So eventually, you know, those things don't get taken care of. So I think, you know, we'll have a first reading, I'll talk about it later, but I think, you know, kind of our options will be simply, you know, we can put more string with things on there, send it down to the state and have it come back and, I mean, you know, Mr. Johnson and, and, uh, Mr. Rankin can speak about it, but more than likely, they're just not gonna fill the paperwork out and not do it. So I think if we do that, we need to come up with a solution of who is going to do that. So that's all I've really got about that.
Thank you, District Four.
No new business.
District Six.
I'll just add everyone else, how wonderful the Madison Street Festival was. Yeah, if you didn't go, you missed a great day. The community just comes together and it was such a happy, every, I didn't see a gumpy face all day. It was just all a good time for everybody and it was great that the community can come together like they do. We've got the police and the fire and we, uh, have the, um, public works. They all did a wonderful job, but then the community came and there were so many volunteers in the community level that also worked. And this committee, it does work a full year to put this on. There are so many moving pieces, so I really want to thank everybody that was on that committee. Y'all did an absolutely wonderful job and thank you. Well, I can't go on enough enough how wonderful it is that we have this activity within our city and how we can come together. There was no need for the police to get involved in anything. It was, there was no big protest. We all just come together like a happy family and I think that is great. It's one of the best virtues we have of this city. Um, so thanks to everyone that was involved and I'll save my comments on the cemetery till later, but thank you all for, for supporting the city and it was great. Thank you.
Thank you, District Seven.
No new business.
Okay, I have one item resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three twenty-seven dash R, authorizing funding of a Santa for our downtown Christmas event not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion second by Powell. Um, any discussion?
I was just gonna say, can we put this in the budget since it's an annual event, uh, either under Council Special Projects so that they know when they plan, that they're guaranteed to have this and they don't have to come annually for it? Can we guarantee Santa every year?
I think we have been, uh...
I know, but just putting it in the budget, not way we don't have to go through...
Well, we can certainly, um, ask Finance Committee.
Okay, well, I, well, ask Roger if we can have Santa.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna say somebody vote against Santa, I thought.
You're gonna make us vote on it every year.
I dare you.
Any other comments ready for a vote?
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. I have one announcement. We have a work session, uh, Wednesday, October eighteenth, this time starting at six-thirty PM because of a conflict that the mayor has earlier in the afternoon, um, and we're going to be discussing, uh, fire safety, the Hexagon Building, other opportunities out in that area, um, and then we're also going to talk about the, uh, proposed hands-free ordinance that Councilmember Roblesky wanted to discuss as well as, I think, an animal shelter.
Mm-hmm. Yes, please.
So those are the items so far that we have on the agenda, but if there are others that you want to add, uh, let me know, but we will host that on, here in council chambers on October eighteenth. Um, let's see, and that's all I have. Next, we've got board and committee appointments and we have a zoning board. Is that you?
I think that is me.
Okay.
Uh, at one time it was gonna be Miss Spears, but anyway, it's, uh, supernumerary, I never get that word right. Two, position for zoning board and adjustments, appeals, uh, Damian Bianca.
Okay, are there any other nominations besides Damian Bianca for supernumerary two?
I dare you say it twice.
I dare you, you just say it once. Huh? I dare you, you just say it once.
Seeing none, Damian Bianca is appointed by acclamation to the zoning board of adjustment and appeals. All right, next, public hearings. We have one public hearing item this evening on the redistricting plan to establish new council district boundaries. And you wanna go ahead and do the presentation first and then we'll sign up for comments?
I'm Mike Slaughter with Slaughter and Associates here to, uh, to, uh, put on the presentation regarding, uh, the redistricting. May Beth, you have that? First of all, I would, may I proceed?
Yes.
First of all, I would like to mention just two or three things. One, we have a, a sign-in sheet, uh, as you enter the door, they're on the left on the table, uh, we would like for everyone that's in attendance to sign in, so we will have record since this is a legal public hearing, uh, it's not just a regular public meeting or council meeting. We're actually in a legal, legally required public hearing. We'd like to have record of everyone's attendance, so we would appreciate, uh, y'all signing in. Also, I have a couple of, uh, handouts that are out in the foyer by the metal detector, there's a little table out there. One of them is actually from, uh, uh, justice.gov regarding redistricting information, uh, and I cover, uh, most of that in the, in the PowerPoint presentation, uh, but you also have an official copy out there. Also located in the foyer, I have the demographic data that I'm gonna go over for both the Benchmark Plan as well as the Plan Three, uh, that is out for the public in the foyer as well. Uh, and tha- next, uh, I'm going to proceed into the PowerPoint presentation, uh, unless there's any questions at this point.
Go ahead.
If none, uh, first, I'd like to mention before, before I start that, that the process we've gone through is we actually had a public meeting on July seventeenth where we presented the Benchmark Plan and there may have been maybe a Plan One or Two at that time. Uh, on August fourteenth, we actually had a work session where I brought my planner as well as the computer and, and, uh, our GIS database and prepared, went through a work session with this city council. As a matter of fact, it was a very productive, uh, work session and ultimately came up with Redistricting Plan Three, which I'm, which the public hearing, uh, will be on, uh, tonight. And then, of course, tonight, we're holding the, uh, required public hearing. Regarding the redistricting facts, what is equal distribution and, and I don't normally like to read off of a PowerPoint presentation, but the first three bullets are pretty important. Uh, the US, United States Constitution Department of Justice require equal distribution of total popul- population among the voting or election districts. Equal distribution applies to the one person, one vote principle, so we have a pretty much balanced population in each election district. The equal distribution is considered to be a total population deviation of ten percent or less between the smallest and largest populated voting districts as compared to the ideal. And here, and I'll get into the numbers, but just to, to give you some numbers upfront, there's the population official census twenty twenty for the city of Madison, fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy. You divide that by seven, uh, election districts and we have a population of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-nine being the ideal population in each district. Well, you're not gonna get it right on that ideal, so we have a threshold that if we come under a ten percent deviation, you want, don't want to be more than five percent above that eight thousand one thirty-nine or five percent below that eight thousand one thirty-nine. So the highest populated, uh, election district would be approximately eight thousand five hundred and forty. Uh, the smallest would be seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. And so if you're exceed that ten percent, then you're going to need to redistrict and I'll get into the numbers that show the city of Madison did exceed that and then we have addressed that with the Plan Three. Uh, and as mentioned, you can't have a greater overall deviation of more than ten percent. The five steps in the redistricting process is determine if redistricting is necessary, which is our Benchmark Plan, develop, uh, provide public awareness and seek public input, develop new plans, provide for public re- review and input, hold a public hearing, which is, we're here for step five, adoption, and then final implementation, update the voter rolls and have, uh, the, uh, voter rolls ready for the next election that rolls around in twenty twenty-five. Next, the criteria for developing the redistricting plans, the required, the required standards as of Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, which is, uh, we have a handout out front from justice.gov. Section Two of the Voting Rights Act is a nationwide prohibition against voting practices and procedures, including redistricting plans, that discriminate on the basis of race, color or membership in a minority, in a language minority group. It prohibits not only election-related practices and procedures that are intended to be racially discriminatory, but also those that are shown to have a racially discriminatory result. And that comes right out of Section Two of the Voting Rights Act. Of course, additional standards that we employ, we certainly wanna incorporate public input and concerns, avoid redistricting of an elected official out of their district, effectuate the least amount of change as possible, avoid, if possible, moving groups of strong constituency out of a particular district, district boundaries, have lines of, of visible demarc- demarcation, avoid where possible splitting census block, and give consideration to polling places and precincts if applicable. On page five, the city of Madison population change. We can see that there's been significant change from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, so it's really not surprising that our election districts were out of balance from the one person, one vote principle. We went from forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight to fifty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-three as the official census or thirty-two point six percent increase. We made some slight modifications to where the Census Bureau was just a little bit off from the official boundary of the city of Madison. It wasn't a significant number, but we have a, a population of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy is what we're redistrict, redistricting, uh, is our redistricting number. Also, on the racial composition, you can see the change, uh, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. In the handouts that we have out front, uh, we have this data in there. It's just not in the, the pie chart graphical form, but we have all of the, uh, the census, uh, racial composition data in there as well, so you can see that's broken down by, uh, white, black and other races. Our Benchmark Plan, that's where we take our current election districts that were prepared based on the twenty-ten decennial census. As a matter of fact, I worked with the city of Madison regarding for the twenty-ten as well as going on back to twenty-twenty, so I've been standing up here a while and I certainly appreciate that opportunity. Uh, uh, so the ones we prepared back in twenty-ten, uh, we, we bring the twenty-twenty, uh, census data in by block and we're able to determine by crunching the numbers, adding them up, the population in, in each, uh, in each, uh, election district, as we have here the total population, we have the ideal and we calculate the variance. We can see, that's highlighted there, we can see all of the variances when you look at the percentages, uh, all election districts with exception of District Seven exceed the five percent because we, you could have five percent above, five percent below, which would give us a total of ten percent. So we wanna make sure no election district exceeds five percent above or below. District Seven was the only one that slightly came in under the five percent. All other districts were above that five percent and you can see District Two and District Five were the ones that were... that were most over and under. You can see graphically here where you can see that the, the, the percentages and as compared to the ideal, uh, with District Two being forty-six point three percent over, District Five being twenty-four point five percent under, and we've also given you the others as well that would need to be adjusted. Uh, and quickly, I can go through. We have this information broken down by racial composition as well as total population for District One. And again, all of this is in the table that we have a handout for. It's just not graphically depicted, but all of it's in the table. District Two, you can see exceeds it. District Three, District Four, District Five, District Six, District Seven is the one that comes in under the five percent. And then we have a map. One thing I'd like to mention, we also have the very same maps that I have up front for the council members in the back, if you wanted to review those. Our benchmark plan, we have broken down, we have the districts outlined in red, and then a different color shading for each election district, so you can see that. When we make revisions and come up with Plan Three, we hold the red line and move the shading, so you can see if the shading color crosses a red line, that's where we make some changes. It moves from one district to another. So if you see a shading, uh, across a red line on the Plan Three, there's where some changes are made. On the benchmark plan, the shading and the red line match perfectly. Uh, so that's where you can highlight where the changes have occurred. Uh, and so just to sum it up before we go to, um, the new plan, the total deviation for our benchmark plan was seventy point eight percent. So we had a little work to do there. We needed to have that number ten percent or less. And then that's where we went into the process of preparing, uh, Plan One. We had a Plan Two, and then ultimately between those two, we came up with a Plan Three, uh, that the city council, uh, I would say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you agreed with it. Some of you maybe more than others, but it's one that ultimately the council directed us to move forward with, and that's sort of how it is, as, as you know, in life in general. There's some give and take, and that's what we went through with the city council, and I appreciate, uh, uh, working with you on that. So, so once we got determined what we need to do on the, uh, benchmark plan, is where we went through that process I just described, and we came up with the Plan Three. Again, this table, uh, is out front, so you have all of the data and information, and you can see where we took the benchmark plan deviation from seventy point seven percent to nine point four percent. Uh, you can see that District Three was a minus four point five percent. District Five was a four point nine percent, which totaled those up to a nine point four percent. This bar chart looks a lot better than the one from the benchmark plan. The one for the benchmark plan was up and down, up and down, all the way across, and basically was in violation of the one person, one vote principle. Uh, to no one's fault, that's just when you have a lot of growth, you can have that imbalance occur. And so you can see that the two that are the, are the, are the largest or smallest, District Five being four point nine percent over, District Three, four point five percent under, gives us our nine point four. Everything else is, uh, is, is, uh, in balance as well, under that five percent. Again, I have the information, uh, with the, uh, racial composition as well as the total population and the percent over and under for each, uh, council district, District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five, District Six, and District Seven. Again, as I was mentioning earlier, wherever we would have a shading across the red line, we also have in red, the total population of that change, the racial popu- the, the, the total white, black, and other, not only the total population, but we break it down with white, black, and others. So you can see that the shading crosses the line. We actually give you the information on the map, so you will know what that population was that was shifted from one election district, uh, to another. And this is, uh, the Plan Three map, which we have up front, also have in the back for the public to review. And with that, Madam President, I'd be glad to turn the public, uh, hearing back over to you and answer any questions you all may have at this time.
Council, do you have any questions of him before we open the public hearing? Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to open the public hearing. Each, uh, member of the public gets to speak for five minutes. You need to state your name and your district, um, and we're going to begin with Jocelyn Brewer, who turned in her comment card.
Thank you. Hi, Jocelyn Brewer. Um, I'm in Taylor's Crossing subdivision, and on this latest map, um, I'm currently District Four. On this latest map, uh, half of my street has been put into District One. Um, I went ahead and did a visual overhead of the areas, um, and, and why our neighborhood should stay together. We have, um, several key points. Uh, we are a small HOA community. We only have forty-five homes and only three streets total. Uh, we do share, uh, HOA, like I said, in a common clubhouse pool area. Our whole neighborhood is surrounded by wetlands on the southern border, and there is a Russ- Russell Branch stream on the east. It flows through and affects our entire neighborhood. Um, we have, uh, it, it actually goes under our street. On the entire right side of Wesley Clark Boulevard, we have a large concrete culvert before, behind our homes. Um, the residents are, um, that we are supposed to maintain that. Um, we also have a large concrete culvert on the opposite side of Wesley Clark Boulevard. Uh, the culvert continues to the church in front on, um, that west side. We actually had some problems. Um, you'll see, we do have, um, a new subdivision coming in on the east side, and they are going to use our drainage. Um, it will filter into our concrete culvert. I know this is a little, it's, it's hard to explain. That's why I tried to give you a nice little visual. And in fact, we each had, we had a, I tried to do a community cleanup too at the church, and all try to help each other keep these culverts clean. Um, so there is some communication there. We also only have one entrance, uh, exit in and out of our neighborhood. Um, that is a source of frustration for us and a reason for us to stay together and all, you know, meet with one, one city council district, uh, member. It is hard enough just being Limestone County and Madison City. I recently, we got some neighbors together to try to meet with the Limestone County engineer and ask them questions, with the Maddie- Madison City engineer and ask them questions. Um, we have issues, um, that unite us. Uh, we don't know how this drainage will go. We may have some, whenever you put in new subdivisions, it affects the drainage on anything nearby, on which you all should, you are pretty well aware of, um, knocking on doors and, and talking to your constituents. Um, and then we also, we share an emergency entrance exit. Um, so there really is no other way in or out of our neighborhood except for the one street. I'm going to be quick here. We already have had multiple sets of engineers and representatives. Like I said, we don't need multiple sets of city representatives as well. It makes it very confusing. Um, I also saw that D-one is still minus, um, four percent. D-four is over, so it wouldn't be any problem to have this one section moved. Um, in addition, I wanted to say the west side will be divided and split three ways. Um, I did give you another map. Um, this is, uh, we would love to have two majority Limestone County districts. Um, and I have sent previous emails, but I wanted to introduce a new map that we're proposing by the citizens. I also, since I have a little time left over, um, thank you for those charts and graphs, but it makes it easy to see. I, um, submitted a map trying to get a district that had more of a minority, majority, and it, it was in District One. Now I'm seeing District One, you're actually gaining, that was the one district there was a chance of, and again, we can't have a majority-minority here, but that was the, the center of our city is a good chance for getting close to that. Now we've got District One is actually, uh, plus almost nine percent whites and minus eight percent, um, in the black population.
You're out of time.
Okay, I doubt, could you would take a look at that as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing on the redistricting?
Margie Daly, Carrington District, live in Madison twenty years. Okay, so I'm really confused, because the last time we did redistricting, we didn't do this here where we introduced the maps, had the pu- the, uh, public meeting the same day. Um, you know, we were all under the impression, we met on seven seventeen. It was just a public information meeting. Then the next was a work session, which the public has no voice at. So this is the second meeting on the redistricting. As, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think that the redistricting should be based on the current council districts. This goes into effect in twenty twenty-five. It has nothing to do with the current council districts. And now we come to find out that one of our council people is jumping ship to go run for the state. So that means his district, which was, is like right next to another council, I mean, why are we considering the council, current council district representatives at all if this goes into effect in twenty twenty-five? It makes absolutely no sense. Um, I also think there's no reason that the west side can't be one district or as close to one district. I mean, I even talked to the mayor a while back about that they'd like to have one polling place on the west side. Now we're going to split it into three districts. There'll probably be at least two polling places on that. So really, it makes no sense for our population. This is the first time we've had like the major thirty percent or around about thirty percent increase in population, so we should divide the city up accordingly. But, you know, I understand, so the two things that this map was based on is one person, one vote, and the current council seats. I mean, it doesn't make sense to do that. Uh, we should divide the city up where it's most convenient for the people and that the, the residents are all together in a voting district. You know, you're going to divide a subdivision. I mean, some maps go right through a house. I, I hope none of these go right through a house, but the, the, uh, current state district goes right through one of the houses on my block. So we're dividing up subdivisions. I think really that the, the residents of Madison, the taxpayers deserve a little better at trying to keep us together and not worrying about our own political agenda. Um... As far as the Supreme Court ruling, I too looked at it, and there is a definite possibility to make a minority district, like Jocelyn said, in the middle of town. That would be where you would go for it. We didn't even try. We didn't even try to do that, even though the Supreme Court has ruled. So I, I don't understand why that wasn't looked at by the, uh, I, I really don't. I mean, there's no reason it shouldn't have been looked at. At least give us an example of why we can't do it, you know? But instead, you know, I really object to the fact that, uh, it was done only on the council, current council district, and that the public has not had enough input. I mean, we thought there was going to be just a pub- another public meeting. We didn't get another public meeting. What we got is on the council agenda, both the public hearing and passing this thing, because we already know you's are going to do what you want, and you're going to pass it. And I really don't, I, I think that it's a shame that you discount the residents and the voters of Madison to, to nothing. You, you don't consider us. You don't consider keeping forty-five houses and you've got to break it up? You've got to be kidding. I mean, why would you do that? That, that sounds like there's something fishy going on as to you don't want some of the houses in that district. Now, maybe one of the people in those houses is, it, that might want to run for office, but we don't want to let them, so we want to isolate them out of the district? Is that the reason? I mean, that's the only reason I can think of, and I happen to know, yeah, I believe somebody wanted to run it, that you cut off the house. I mean, this is not the way we're supposed to work. We're supposed to be open. You're supposed to have public hearings. The residents are supposed to be allowed to speak up. Instead, you can't say, "Mike," and you're going to throw me out of the meeting? Seriously? People were talking behind me. You didn't say a word. But right away, I said, "Mike," and you, "I'm going to throw you out of the meeting." Well, you know, fine, if that's what you have to do, throw me out of the meeting, you know, just like the shanty shacks, they don't want me back there. That's fine, you know, what it says.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. You're out of time.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who'd like to address the issue on the public hearing?
Bernadette Mayer, District Five. Um, I think some very rare good public, um, comments were made in this meeting. I think, uh, there specifically with, um, having these multiple voting places and you can't keep certain districts together on, uh, uh, as was, was said, and I also think that, um, that a lot of the comments that, um, Ms. Jocelyn made were very, very relevant as far as that subdivision needing to stay in, in one district because they're dealing with Limestone County, Madison City. They've got some specific drainage issues with new properties around their areas, wetlands, everything else that's going on like that. I don't think that the council should be ready to vote on this tonight. I think it should be looked at again and, uh, for the specific comments that were made. And I do think that, um, some effort should be made towards the, uh, um, the, uh, a racial district if, if that's possible, the minority district in the middle of town. Um, and I do think that, uh, a lot of good work has been done on this, and on the surface, it looks fine, but again, there's a lot of details that really need to be looked at. And like I said, Jocelyn's, um, subdivision is one, and, uh, and also, uh, in one way, I think, okay, the people in the council, you know, want to stay in their same districts because they, they probably want to run again in twenty twenty-five, but that shouldn't, that shouldn't be, um, um, a major consideration. I think the many other things can be, and, and to see if they do fit in with the district. So, um, there's just a lot of, of, of public concern, I think, on this. Um, and I d- I do think that, uh, the people do have a right to, um, have this be really thoroughly, properly done so that th- there's people within certain subdivisions aren't confused which polling place they need to go to, because it differs from, you know, the person that's on their same street, for instance, you know, in their same subdivision. So, um, I do think that there's a lot of detail that can be done and should be done, and the points here tonight, I think, um, make it reasonable to reconsider these and, um, have, um, have a vote at, at, at another time and possibly, um, a refinement of this, um, Plan Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. And just for a point of clarification, we're not voting on this tonight. We're having a public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Mayer. And just for a point of clarification, we're not voting on this tonight, we're having a public hearing. We, we're having one. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on the redistricting proposal? Seeing none, we will close public hearings and I'd like to offer the opportunity for council, if anyone has any questions for, uh, Mr. Slaughter or Mayor Beth, if you wanna add anything.
One thing I'd like to mention, just real quick off the bat, is that it's not just one subdivision that's been divided. There have been several subdivisions that have been divided. In an ideal world, you know, it, it would be exact and refined and every number would be, uh, uh, you know, exactly the same. We had a meeting about this and I requested that Park Meadow stay together for a specific situation that it's a much older population there and, and more challenging for them. And I was very grateful that Mr. Slaughter was able to balance it out. It's just very difficult, the city of our size, to, you know, have it street by street. And, and I just wanted to address that, that we're not singling out any one subdivision. John subdivision, I think, is also, that one just north of yours is also divided. And you can say which one it is, I'm not as.
Buckingham.
Yeah, Buckingham is also divided, so, um, the point I'm trying to make is we're not singling anybody out.
And I just wanted to clarify, this is the, I believe, the fourth meeting that we've had on redistricting. Um, as was mentioned, there was a meeting initially in July, and our consultants presented the fact that the city was out of balance, exceeding that ten percent at about seventy percent. They then proceeded to go ahead and prepare, uh, plans, they brought the plans to you, got public comment. Um, we had an additional meeting in which the consultant was here with their laptop, as Mr. Slaughter was indicating. And the last meeting that you had, Plan Three was presented. Um, and so this is not the first time that this, this plan has been presented to the public. It's not been changed since the last time it came to the public. And yes, you're right, that, um, just the way the math works out, there are a number of subdivisions throughout the city that are split between districts. Um, and it's unfortunate, I, I suppose. Um, but, um, I did wanna point out, in terms of polling, there isn't a requirement that there be a polling place in each district. Um, so it may work out that even though a subdivision is split between districts, they're all gonna go to the same polling place anyway. Um, you know, that has yet to be determined. So I don't think that that, um, is going to have any real bearing on, uh, where people are gonna be voting just once the clerks is able to secure polling places. So I just wanted to clarify for the record, this is not the first time everybody's seen this exhibit. And again, we've had many meetings, um, beyond two that were just mentioned. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Slaughter? Or, um, I, I have one follow-up on this issue of splitting neighborhoods because we've been through three maps now. And each time we've asked you to draw a line or put one neighborhood back together, then it had a domino effect. And so there was another one. And I think I asked this question at our last work session. There, there doesn't seem to be a way that we can draw a map that every neighborhood stays completely together because you're using blocks.
Right, and I hate to use the word impossible, so I'll use practically impossible. But it's, I don't think we could, in reality, avoid splitting, uh, neighborhoods in a, in a city as large as the city of Madison. And this is very common. I, I've been doing redistricting for over thirty years for many, many cities and towns. It is very common for this to happen. And you can look at it on one side, it just depends on how you look at it, obviously. That if you, if it wasn't split, you've got one voice. But if it is split, you have two voices on the council, if you have a, a, a split subdivision. So it's just practically impossible to avoid splitting subdivision. We can try the best that we can, and we've done that here, uh, but it's almost impossible to do that.
Okay, Mr. Slaughter, there was one, um, allegation made during public hearings that we were trying to draw a district to move somebody out so that they couldn't run for office. Have you and I had any communication, or viewed communication with any member of this council asking you to change a line at any point in this process? Except for the public hearings where we've been, I think Councilmember Denzine was not pleased with the first map, and you sort of adjusted that, but that was in a public setting.
Right, absolutely not. This redistricting is for the, the one-person-one-vote principle with an impact, with taking in mind the impact on the minority voting strength. It is not to block anyone from voting, being elected, or anything like that. We do, uh, as, as in any city, as I've done, this will be the third time for the city of Madison, start with the benchmark plan, which are your current council districts, and work from those. It's always been that, it's always been, been that. And so we are aware of your current council districts, where each of you that were elected by the citizens, you all were elected by the citizens, and where you all live, and, and make modifications from there, uh, to have a balance. So there's nothing here, I've never been asked, if I had, I would not do it. But I can assure you, I haven't been asked to do any redistricting that would disadvantage anyone in any way, period.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
All right, I, I just, I, I got a question, this is the first time I've ever heard of it. Um, a, a, um, I, I don't even know if this goes with the law or not, but I'm gonna ask. And rule number one, never ask a question if you don't know the answer, so I'm gonna violate that rule. But majority-minority, would that not violate the, uh, the act in which you're trying to comply with for one vote, you know, equal representation, uh, and equal demographics across the board?
And let me answer that this way, as, as a planning consultant, not as an attorney, uh, or representing the Department of Justice. But let's just assume if we had, um, majority-minority ward that existed now, which we don't, but let's just assume that we had that majority-minority ward, and then we came in and split that up where that majority went away, then that would be causing some problems, but that does not exist. A lot of the minority population in, in the city of Madison is, is not really concentrated. You do have some, but the majority of, is distributed throughout the city, which makes it more of a challenge to create that majority-minority ward. So believe me, if there was, if that was possible for us to do that, certainly, I would have brought that to your attention. But we have looked at where the minority population is located, how it's distributed, and with the low percentage, it would be difficult to do that. Now, we have kept in mind, and some of the, 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 the black percentages did go down in some wards, but they also went up in other wards. Uh, so maybe it went down in, in Ward One or Two, but it also went up in other wards. So we're well aware of how it impacts the minority voting strength overall.
And can you help elaborate a little bit as to why one of the rules is you try to keep council in the same current and what the future rezoning is?
Yes, and, and because we, we start with the current, the way you define the benchmark plan is you take the current election districts, which every one of you reside in your own district stating the obvious. There's not two in one district at all, you're, every one of you were elected at the last election in your district. That's what we start with to come up with the benchmark plan. That's not my rules, that's not your rules, that comes straight from the Department of Justice in developing the benchmark plan. Then we determine if we're out of balance then, and start shifting those current election districts till we reach a balanced, uh, state. We like to keep every one of you in your own district because, again, you were elected by the people. I don't wanna be one that would take you out because if I put, uh, District Six and District Seven all in one district, we're gonna have to automatically have a special election, one of them's gone and somebody else is gonna be elected. And, uh, and I should not create that. If we can balance it with your current, uh, uh, election districts and keep everyone in their separate, uh, uh, council districts, that is our, uh, number one goal.
Counselperson Seifer, I have an additional point I wanted to point out. The state law, Alabama Code Section eleven forty-three B dash sixteen-three specifically requires that no term of an incumbent member of the council shall be shortened because of any redistricting. So that's another one requirement from the state that requires us to work within those, uh, those boundaries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I've got.
Any other questions for Mr. Slaughter? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, I'm, I will leave the, the maps, the large maps, just in case y'all need them. We've emailed to Mayor Beth a copy of the PowerPoint presentation and, and all. And so certainly if any other questions come up, you all have my number. I know Mayor Beth knows very well how to get in touch with me. So I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of assistance to the city of Madison once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your work. All right, department reports, planning.
Good evening. Uh, the first item is Proposed Ordinance Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-thirteen, and this would be to adopt the new legal descriptions, uh, for the council districts as was presented. This is just a first reading. Um, we put this on the agenda in the event that you wanted to do the first reading, but you certainly do not need to, but, but it's here. And if you keep the first reading on, then you would be acting on the, um, proposed, um, district boundaries for Plan Three at your next meeting.
I think that was the plan.
Okay.
With the schedule.
All right. Your next item is Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-eighteen-dash-R. This is to set a public hearing to rezone a, um, approximately one acre property. You can see it, um, shown there on the PowerPoint. Um, it's located at three-one-two Palmer, from M-two to M-one, there's an existing structure there. Um, the Planning Commission and staff are supporting this, and the public hearing would be set for November thirteenth.
Is the existing structure a home or?
It's a, a business, so it's currently zoned M-two, which is our industrial zone, our most intensive industrial zone. This would be down zoning it to M-one, which is our restricted industrial zone.
Thank you.
Your next item is Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-twenty-dash-R. This is also to set a public hearing, and this is for the rezoning of approximately five-point-five acres on Penchin Road, um, from agriculture to, on, from Penchin Row, uh, from agriculture to R-one-B. Again, this public hearing would be set for November thirteenth. Uh, you can see the area, um, demarcated on the map. Um, it's sandwiched between, uh, residential, um, homes on the south and to the north and on the east side. There's industrial on the west. Planning Commission and staff are recommending this rezoning, and again, your public hearing would be on November thirteenth.
Do we need to go ahead and move to set the public hearing?
Uh, yes, did you vote on the, the last one? I'm sorry.
We did not.
Oh, let's go back, I zip right through.
All right, let's go to back.
Sorry about that.
Item D, Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-one-eight-dash-R, setting a public hearing.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for November thirteenth.
Motion in a second, any discussion, ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifer?
And the motion passes. Next, we've got Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-two-zero-dash-R, setting a public hearing also for November thirteenth.
Mm-hmm. Make a motion to set that public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifer?
And the motion passes. Okay, all right.
But before you zip to, um, item D, I just wanted to ask, um, for the, and I know it's just the first reading, for the five-point-five acres, can you tell us what kind of homes are gonna be there? Are they gonna be single-family homes, town homes?
So the, uh, proposed R-one-B zoning only allows for single-family homes. Uh, it's a minimum fifteen thousand square foot lots. On this particular property, um, the applicant is indicating anywhere from five to ten homes for the five-point-five acres.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Your next item is Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-twenty-two-dash-R. This is also to set a public hearing. This is to change text of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the urban center district to allow for medical offices, um, without a restriction, and to also allow for childcare centers, the public hearing would be on November thirteenth.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for November thirteenth?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
I mean, Seifer, sorry.
Okay, and that motion passes, and then Mayor Beth?
I've done my many worst thoughts.
In terms of public hearings, we did have a public hearing we initially were scheduling for this evening, but we are moving it to October twenty-third.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-two-seventy-five-dash-R, so we will hear that public hearing at the next council meeting.
Correct, mm-hmm.
Okay, now, you're on E.
Yes. Proposed Ordinance Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-fourteen. This is to amend Chapter Eight of the city's code to establish regulations and an appeal process for mural applications. You had your first meeting, reading at your last meeting, so we're asking for your approval this evening. Um, as you know, we've had multiple work sessions. This is to allow for murals in select areas of the city, specifically, uh, in the B-one zoning area, which constitutes mostly downtown, in the urban center district, and, and the commercial areas of our T-and-D district, which, um, there's a portion of that in Town Madison and also in the Village of Oakhorn Springs. We've had a lot of input on the ordinance. Uh, we're proposing the ordinance as last was presented in a public meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any questions for Mayor Beth?
I will say, I've seen this actually being applied now, uh, down in, uh, what I would call the loveliest village in the plains, uh, in Auburn. But, uh, they're doing it down there, and I've told some of the folks that work for the city, and it's, it's, it's actually, the way they're applying it is very, very nice. So it's, it's, uh, kinda excited to see this come, so, thank you.
Some would dispute that, and it'd be interesting to have an Alabama mural down there, so.
Now, we can't, we can't define the city that way.
You also, you also can't regulate what goes in, so.
Could've offered one right next to it, that's all it's gonna do.
Mayor Beth, get control.
I think we're gonna put up a Georgia Tech mural, just so I was just saying.
Okay, I think we're ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last planning item is Proposed Ordinance Number twenty-two-three-dash-three-fifteen, and this is to amend Chapter Twenty-eight of the code to establish a mural advisory board. Um, the board would have five members, it would be appointed by the mayor and city council. And, uh, we do have staggered terms, which is one of the items that you requested.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions?
Just one quick question, so there are five members, and there's one mayor and seven council members. Do we just come together at a work session and people will apply and we'll just discuss in general? Is that what you're envisioning?
Yes, I think you'll, you'll all work together to kind of figure out. Um, I'm sure that there may be people who are interested. We had also talked about the fact that, um, different civic groups might suggest individuals that might be good members, and you can arm wrestle for it.
You may wanna secretly see what district we wanna move them into first. I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, so if someone from the historic review board, will they be on this?
No.
Unless they apply, they could, or?
They could, yes.
It would be a consideration.
It would be. Um, for murals that are proposed in the historic district, the murals would go first to the mural advisory board, um, to get a certificate of approval, and then they would still have to go to the historic commission to get a certificate of appropriateness. So it'd be a bit redundant to have that individual serving on both. But you could choose to do that if you wanted.
But it does get reviewed by the historic review?
In the historic district, it would have to go to the Historic Preservation Commission, yes, mm-hmm.
How is it being decided which, which position gets two years, which ones get four?
The council and mayor will come to that when you appoint people. It, it's sort of an organic process that amazingly works itself out. It, it, yeah. And you may have some individuals who really only want it be on for a two-year period. They don't wanna commit longer, and so it, it really, it's usually not a major conflict.
Okay. When would they start opening up people to put in applications?
So, um, this will get codified, and then we'll work through the mayor's office and, um, with.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor Beth. Public Works.
Can I ask me to speak to these two items that are under Public Works? The first one being Proposed Ordinance Number 2023-164. This is amending the ground regulations for cleaning, restoring headstones in the city of Madison municipal cemeteries. And this is the first reading.
Hey, I'm gonna open this up for some comments because I know we have councilmembers who wanna share some thoughts.
Yes. First reading. Yes. And I will say this is born out of the cemetery committee. So, we have been discussing this for several months. And just to set aside a couple of concerns, somebody had mentioned that access to the cemetery was going to be needed, and that's not true. What we're doing is we're following Alabama Historic Commission guidelines on how to clean a tombstone. And they have very specific regulations. They don't want people to go in with a pressure washer. They don't want people to use bleach or other toxic materials. So, what we're doing is we're following their guidelines. If somebody like Mr. Rankin or Mr. Johnson wanna come and, and do some work on a tombstone, they have a, a Alabama Historic Commission form to fill out, which basically just says their name and when they're gonna do it and what materials they're gonna use, so that when our Public Works guys are there mowing and they see something happening, they're gonna know it's been approved. So, it's not like Montgomery's gonna have to approve it. We're just following the Alabama Historic Commission guidelines on what they say is the best way to preserve these tombstones, whether they were interred last week or they, we have some that are 200 years, well, maybe not 200 years old, but 150 years old. So, that's all it is, is it's following those guidelines. Anybody who wants to come into the cemetery to see their ancestors or their immediate family members, of course, is welcome to do it. What we're doing is we're asking people to not take tombstones to their home or off-site without asking permission. And Brian, can you kind of elaborate on what I said?
Sure, absolutely. There were some, I guess, some comments about the city can do what it wants to. Why are we ceding this to Montgomery? It is my legal opinion, after looking at Alabama Code Section 13A-7-231, I'm holding the 2021 version of this, the most updated version of it. It creates authority in the Alabama Historical Commission, and it says, and I'll just read it very quickly, "to provide for the lawful preservation, investigation, restoration, or relocation," it says human remains, and then it goes on to say, "or funerary objects. And if they shall, mandatory, promulgate rules and regulations for the issuance of a permit and may issue a permit to those persons accompanying who seek to restore, preserve, relocate." This provision pre emptes us from being able to pass something different that says something different. I've looked at this. This is the way that Huntsville looks at this. I've talked to the people at the Historic Commission, and they believe they have the authority for everyone to fill an application, even if you are using soap, which surprised me. So, that is where my research leaves it. So, what we put together upon the request of the committee was just simply to put something in our ordinance so that a, you know, somebody wanting some guidance as to what to do would be able to look at our ordinance and know that there is a form process with the state, that whatever form it has to be filled out, sent to the state, can be sent a courtesy copy over to Mr. Kent Smith, so he knows what's going on. And then we basically just provide them with, with knowledge that there is a process for them to go by. And also reference of the website where we have the cleaning guidelines that this state agency has for it. So, whether, whether council decides to pass this amendment, all those regulations still remain as far as having to fill this form out, et cetera. Now, whether the Historic Commission is in fact investigating, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's what they're supposed to do. And whether or not they would take any action if you didn't fill out a form, I can't speak to. But they do on the books have this authority, and that's why we were asked to insert this into the ordinance, just so that people, you know, well-meaning people knew what to do rather than just going out there and start cleaning things with bleach or, God forbid, you know, a pressure washer and destroying a replaceable stone.
Right. And there are additional issues addressed as well, like the laying of wreaths. If the Boy Scouts wanna lay wreaths, Veterans Day is coming up, they're going to let us know when they're gonna lay the wreath and when they're gonna pick the wreath up. And again, it's a communication source for Kent, so his guys know, okay, Veterans Day is the 11th. We, they're gonna lay the wreath on the 9th. We need to mow on the 8th, so we're not mowing up all the wreaths that have been placed on the grass, right? So, it's really an opportunity for Public Works to know who's gonna be in the cemetery. We're never banning anybody from the cemetery. We're wanting some communication between the, the American Legion, when they're gonna go and put flags out. Well, the 4th of July, but they're not putting the flags out on the 4th of July. They're putting them on the 2nd of July, and they're picking them up on the 6th of July. So, we need to mow on the 1st of July. And hey, it's the 10th of July and the flags haven't been picked up. Who's our contact for that? Oh, we need to let them know, hey, you know, come and pick up the flag. So, really, this was passed or requested by the cemetery committee. It's recommended by the cemetery committee. We've had discussions, I think, since May. And again, it just comes down to communication so that Kent knows who's gonna be there, what they're doing. If a U-Haul pulls up and they're taking a bunch of tombstones, hey, what's going on? Have you filled out your form? I haven't gotten anything. In addition to the form going to Public Works, a copy will be with Lisa so that she's also aware. So, it's gonna be online. They can fill it out. We're coming, we're putting out wreaths. This is the day we're putting them out. This is the day we're picking it up. And that way, Public Works knows what's going on.
And the only thing that I would add is there's a provision here that makes it a Class A misdemeanor for removing these stones. And it gives you a safe harbor if you have one of these applications that you have received from, from the state. So, basically, someone could unintentionally remove a stone, do something with the stone, try to restore the stone, and not realize that if they just gone through this application process, they would've had a safe harbor to any sort of, you know, what's on the books as far as a Class A misdemeanor.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll let everybody else comment, 'cause I've kinda commented a little bit. I mean, are we really writing an ordinance to stop a volunteer from doing something? I mean, seriously? So, you guys, you guys go ahead. I, I mean...
So, is this form just to go to Montgomery? Is there a reason? Is it just to stay here? Is it just, so there's a form? I'm trying to understand exactly what authority is necessary in here.
Well, the Alabama Historic Commission has, has basically, they, they're enabled to provide for, they promote, they promulgate rules, regulations for the issuance of a permit. And as pursuant to that authority, they have put together an application that apparently has 32 lines. It's lengthy. And they require people to fill that out, return it back to them, and you can only proceed with any restoration or removal or changes to the headstone if it's historic or 75 years, if you are approved by the commission. So, that's the process that they, they have now on the books.
And we're not requiring that. We're not sending the form to Montgomery, right?
No, no. We're just asking for a courtesy copy.
We're using that form that the Alabama Historic Commission has said, these are the materials that you should use. You should not dig up any bodies, things like that. I mean, that's a little early in there. I've forgotten the...
Has anybody done that?
Yes, actually.
Somebody dug up a body?
They, they went and, I, yes, they buried a child late at night in the cemetery. Yeah. So, yes, there, there, that did happen. And you can come to the cemetery committee and hear the story if you'd like. I don't really wanna share it. But again, it, it just goes back to communication. We're not sending the form. We're using the form that the Alabama Historic Commission has already said, this is who's doing the work. This is the work they're gonna do. These are the materials that are authorized. You don't use palm olive. You use a specific material called D2, which is apparently like $100 a gallon, so that, because those materials have preserved the tombstones. If you go out to the cemetery, it's a beautiful time of year to go out there and you look and you look at the old tombstones and you see those pock marks, if you know what I'm talking about, how it's not, it almost looks like the popcorn ceilings. That's because the improper material's been used. We're just having a form so that people know, this is what we're gonna do. These are the materials you can use.
What problem are we trying to solve?
Good question.
The destruction of tombstones.
No, 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 no. What I keep hearing is communication.
Mm-hmm.
That sounds like the problem we're trying to solve. So, my question is, has the cemetery committee and, I'm sorry, I know you said, the Historical Society? All right. I know it's been called hysterical sometimes. Yes, ma'am. But have you guys, like, gotten in a room and talked?
Mm-hmm.
It is apparent that that has not happened.
The gentleman came to the cemetery committee meeting that we had two weeks ago. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Rankin were there, and both spoke.
So, here, here's my point. Communication...
You shaking your head, Mr. Rankin? Were you not at the meeting? I mean, not Mr. Rankin, Mr. Johnson. Okay.
All right. So, I, I guess my point is this, is communication is not hearing somebody. Communication is something coming out of my mouth, you receiving it, understanding what I'm saying, and us having a dialogue. That has not occurred, because this is having to come to a city council meeting, and we're basically right now having like an argument between two neighbors that really needs to be solved between the two neighbors and let that happen. At this point, this is ridiculous that this is having to come before a city council meeting. We have some volunteers that are trying to be respectful. I understand we have guidelines from the city, but what I'm hearing is, hey, we need about five things, and we can make this very easy. Let us know what you're cleaning. What are we cleaning with? Yeah, we got some regulations here and there. We're making this frickin' complicated when it doesn't need to be. And filling out a 32-line state form, I'd go home too. That's ridiculous. It is plum ridiculous.
I don't think it's a 32-page form, though.
32 lines.
Oh.
If I, I mean, for real?
It's, it's a long form. Um, I, I think in the format that it is in, I would not vote for it. I, I think you need to know this. I think your committee needs to know.
Mm-hmm.
There, I think John's point is well-taken. There's got to be a way for us to maintain local control of our own cemeteries, make sure that it is being preserved and using whatever the best practices are in restoring. And I, I think we do need to get some people in a room where everybody's really happy for this process, and we're not there right now.
Sure. Can I, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Can I ask Mr. Johnson a question, or whoever's doing this? I'm assuming that he's the one that does all of the...
Sure. Mr. Johnson, would you please...
You come up to the podium, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any kind of training to, to put together headstones or clean headstones? Have you, is there any kind of training out there that...
Yes, sir. I've, not only have I looked at a lot of online stuff, but I attended a two-day seminar in Pulaski, Tennessee, put on by the, oh, I don't have the notes right now, but it's a National Cemetery Headstone Conservatory Group. And this two-day seminar, we actually did restore headstones. They did some cleaning. They showed us the preferred ways, where they do it in Arlington Cemetery, the materials that are accepted and acceptable and things that are not. But yes, that type of training.
Okay. Are you familiar with anyone on the cemetery committee, or maybe even you, that someone else has had some type of training other than what you've had? Or you...
I, I have not had any training at all. I don't know if Ms. Anderson has or not.
It's pretty much, I've been, John Rankin, myself, and me, both some very self of the mill, that's actually done any work there since 2004. There's been work before, that the people tried to fix headstones in their best attempts. But, no, as far as I know, I'm, it...
Do you have anyone who's an apprentice that will take over your position if you decide that you don't wanna fill out a 32-line?
No, I don't. No, sir.
And you, is there anyone that you think could volunteer for that?
Volunteers are hard to come by. I think they would shut it down. I think that'd be the end of it. And I'd like to say that at that cemetery that we're working in, there's over a dozen headstones that need work. Some are in parts, some are laying down, some are radically leaning. They need work. And I'd be happy to walk the cemetery with you guys, show you what we've done and what needs to be done. And this ordinance, if you pass it, it's gonna shut me. And John Rankin said he would also stop. We're not gonna do this.
Okay. That's, that's all the questions that I really have.
Okay. I just wanna thank both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Rankin for your community service, to honor those that have passed and to take care of their gravestones so others can come by and remember them. And I think what you're doing is a wonderful service. Oh, thank you. And I think if we can just figure out a simple something, we don't need a 32-line thing, just something that if somebody needs to be contacted, so Public Works is aware, something simple, I think this can be worked out. Absolutely. Absolutely. I agree with you. Thank you so much. And it needs to be managed, no question.
Do you have a solution to this?